This meeting of the Arundel Planning Board is ordered today, January 23, 2020. It is 7:06 PM, we're in the MLV Elementary School in Almond Green. I need a roll call.
Margane.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Benham.
Yes, Bergen.
That's right. We have approval of the agenda, approval of minutes, public comment, which is not on here, but we will put it in. We have a public workshop, a zoning amendment in the townhouse corner district. We have a pending application, DuBois automobile salvage conditional use renewal. And then we have two new applications, time permitting. The first one is the Irving Road subdivision, a subdivision pre-application, and a Arundel keep subdivision, pre-application as well. We'll then have whatever other business we come up with.
Moves or accept?
I second.
Motion made and seconded.
The public workshop, how long do you think that would take?
Given the fact that there's only one person from the public here, about that long.
Okay.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? It is unanimous. The next item is the approval of minutes for January 9.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Extinction.
It is unanimous. Was there an extension?
Yes, because Tom is in here. On it, don't worry.
Thank you. On to the next item. Does anybody from the public have anything that they would like to discuss that is not on the agenda? See, no great rush to speak. We will move on to the public workshop. The workshop is going to be presented by Robert Metcalf of Mitchell and Associates relating to Townhouse Corner District. It's a proposal to reduce the minimum residential unit density from 20,000 square feet with sewer or water to 8,000 square feet in the Townhouse Corner District. The request is specifically for the rental apartment units known as the Arundel Grange LLC is sponsoring the proposed amendment, and Robert Metcalf of Mitchell and Associates is the applicant's agent.
Take it away, boss.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention that a notice was sent, public notice was of course posted, sent out on the website, sent out to the email subscribers, and was nailed 10 days prior to, to every single resident or every single property owner in the Townhouse Corner District. So that was all sent out, but apparently it's not exciting.
Did you get any calls?
I didn't get any calls.
I was also told by a lot of residents that they all got that notice.
Oh, they did. If you could just give us a brief overview, and then we can get you put on the agenda to proceed forward.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Metcalf, Mitchell and Associates, and I'm the director of the Arundel Grange LLC. Brief overview, scenario photograph of the location, white outline is what is the townhouse square district? Lock Haven Road, Senate Road, kind of cut back through here. The proposal is, as indicated, is to look at reducing the minimum lot size for multifamilies from 20,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet. Twenty thousand square feet, as we were just discussing with someone else last week, is really what probably came out of the main state plumbing code where 20,000 square foot minimum lot size was what was required. In the townhouse square zone, the conference of plans tends to support this type of development and multi-use and multipurpose and residential in terms of the character. There are 48 parcels, I mean, excuse me, there are 28 parcels, a total of 49 acres within the district. The smallest lot is about a 16,000 square foot lot, which is down in this location in here, and everything ranges up to about five and a quarter acres. So it's a very, but the average in there is probably about a two acre size as far as a minimum lot size. So there is a fairly adequate area for people to do some sort of additional development. The Grange Hall is this parcel right in here. We discussed with the, run out of space, I'll throw this over here. We discussed with the KKW Water District in terms of where water service is in the area right now. They did a major expansion, extension on North Street, as you're probably all aware of, and upgraded. So right now, the terminus is right here, about Senate Road, and that's an eight inch line. They brought a 12 inch line all the way up to this intersection, and there's a 12 inch that runs down here, and there's the 16 inch that runs down along the Arundel Road. In conversations with the district, I mean, they offered this without my really even getting into any depth in terms of being able to extend water the rest of the way out. There isn't an issue with it, of an obvious cost, but they did entertain the fact that because of all the upgrades that they've done, if water were extended along there, they would have some sort of contribution without giving a dollar sense of being able to upgrade it to a larger line than what would necessarily be needed to serve the number of lots we're still down on. So that was often on the table, but that's something I can't commit to, but it was language that was presented to, yes.
Just so, because I'm relatively new to the area, can you just show me where Winx is? So Winx is there.
Yep.
So the water goes not to, it goes up to Winx.
It goes up to Winx, that cuts across here.
And then it goes up?
And then it goes up.
Got it.
And comes up to just about where Senate.
Senate Road is.
Extends how far down on Arundel Road?
Yeah. I have a sketch, but I don't have that one with me right now. It does go.
There's a hydrant on there.
Yeah. It covers the full district, you know, as far as the extension is concerned. It goes all the way down as far as that, and I think it actually goes a little bit beyond it.
So it would go down by the golf course, down by the driving range?
Yeah, exactly.
I can see the board. The line is suspended on the bridge there.
Yeah, I think you're right.
No, actually goes under, goes under.
It's suspended, but it goes under, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a requirement when they put the driving range in, we told them they had to put in a hydrant.
Okay.
What are we looking at meaningful?
Oh, no, no, no. There was no way fire department would have been able to get water out there if they didn't put it in.
Now, where is along that section distance to the near hydrant to the Grange Hall? Distance roughly?
Grange Hall is down here, it's not really even on this picture.
No, it's just on the, this is the driveway coming into the Grange, the hydrant in this location here.
And that was probably the closest.
Yeah, but.
There's a hydrant here, I don't have a scale on this, this was just an enlarged block.
A ballpark idea.
Oh. Probably less than, probably about 800 feet. That's a minus, it's not that far.
Because normally in the ordinances, it has to be within 1,000 feet, that's why I always ask the question.
Yep.
So in addition to using the Grange Hall buildings and making them more user-friendly with a greater number of condos, units, whatever you want to call them, are you going to do some single-family housing in there too, or townhouses, or nothing? So you're just going to build?
Nothing's happened, nothing's being proposed except that one building that exists now.
Right now?
Yeah, no, well, not in my future.
Not in your future.
Basically, the way the zoning is in terms of the lot area and the, with the proposal for the 8,000 square foot versus 20,000 square feet, there's a maximum number of units that could actually be built on this site.
I don't think there's any way, in my opinion, but that's not the one that counts. There's no way any more units could be built outside of the two buildings that are there.
Period.
Period. That's what I feel, knowing the septic capability and what's already there.
And again, the amendment is for multifamily, so apartments, multifamily housing, not single-family homes.
Right.
Just to be clear in terms of the direction we're looking at.
I was just thinking that once we approve something like this or disapprove it, then what does that do to further, when we're all in the great beyond enjoying ourselves, what does that do to the development of the property? Anything, Tad? Is it always going to be multifamily use, or can some of that property be developed for single-family houses or townhouses?
There's not a lot of room in there, it's a two acre, 2.1.
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
So the rest of it is, that's part of that townhouse district, there's nothing more?
See this area here, Susan? So this starts the driveway. I'll use this one, this might be easier.
Are you talking the whole district or their particular lot?
The whole district.
Aren't you talking?
Well, I'm talking about your lot, but what it does to the district as a whole, once.
Given that the largest lot is just over five acres, so you'd probably be talking about, well, whatever, if this change is made, whatever the people in that district want, I'm thinking that's about what, 20 dwelling units that you could put onto that five acre parcel?
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be multifamily, because quite frankly, you can't have a standalone single-family house dwelling on that, on any kind of parcel like this, within 8,000 square foot, 8,000 square foot footprint, without having some sort of community septic. You'd have to have a community septic of some sort, just don't have it wrong.
So I guess what I'm asking is.
You have to have water and community septic to pull this off.
Say this gets developed, and then does that sort of form a framework for how the rest of the land around it gets developed? So say that five acre lot wants to subdivide and make it single-family homes as opposed to multifamily, I'm just curious.
No, because in that zone, it's a two acre zone.
Yeah, is this proposal, I know what we're proposing, does it change the whole townhouse corner district?
That's basically where I'm going.
So it does, so your question. Sorry.
It does change the entire zone, but this change is specifically referenced to a multifamily. Single-family is still looking at a two acre lot.
See, I just wanted to say, Susan, I just wanted to say, in relation to my property, it's right in here, solely here. There's the building that I'm talking about, talking about changing from its current use, which is one big apartment in the bike store. To the right of this building, over to my property line, to the right of that red dot, that's the septic field. Nothing's going to be built on that.
So it can't be built on.
To the left of this side is the entrance to the property to get to the back building and parking lot. It is a parking lot, serves as a really kind of a means of egress to the back building. There is no room on this property to build anything.
Right, and I have no doubt that that's correct.
Yeah, I get it, you're asking about the district.
I wanted to know what the net effect is of this one decision and how it affects for other decisions down the road.
It also requires town water, and town water doesn't go to every property. So you have to have town water.
It can.
But it could.
If someone wants to pay for it, sure.
Yeah, but whatever.
But if it does, it's kind of a good thing, meaning they want to pay for.
I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, the only way the density is going to increase in that area is, as we said, is if it's multifamily. If someone wants to take the larger parcel and create single-family lots, then they're going to come up with the one acre minimum lot size, as well as being able to support individual septic systems for this location.
Question.
How close is the public sewer?
There is no public sewer.
I thought there was.
Not in Arundel, but in Kenny Bunkport.
Kenny Bunkport.
Sewer, the closest is down on North Street, near Lock Street.
Quite a ways.
Yeah.
I just didn't know how far up North Street, but I know it's pretty far.
Yeah, most of it is.
Too far for your.
Well, you said that, I mean, but I think it is. I know.
It's probably about 1,500 feet, the Arundel side where the forestation is, is where it stops.
Well, clearly, nobody is that concerned that they're all here to see your presentation and put their two cents in, so it doesn't seem like anybody is too worried about it. But I, you know, all these decisions that we make have an overarching effect on future decisions that.
Then worry about it now.
Right, but they.
Yeah, yeah.
Yet.
We know how we have the lake covers. But the question is, to the chair, question is, the fact is, if you have a single dwelling family house now, in that zone, can they turn that into like a duplex?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a multi. That's why, because duplexes usually have their own guidelines, and that's why asking that question is, because you have some of them, single-family, and turn it into a.
Well, I think if you had a single-family house and you had two acres of land, you could tear the single-family house down and put up an apartment building.
Yeah.
And for however many apartments that you would qualify for.
But it may not be apartments, per se.
It could be condos, it could be almost anything.
But single-family duplex, I mean, I don't really call a duplex an apartment.
No, and I understand that, but I'm just saying, if they wanted to build something the size of the Grange, after they tear that single-family house down, they could do that.
But I'm saying, in an existing structure, or will also a mother-in-law's apartment be allowed easier because?
I, and they're already allowed, so I don't think.
It is already allowed.
I think the limiting factor is going to be the septic.
Exactly.
That is what's.
You're going to have to have a large enough septic to be able to handle it.
Correct.
So I'm just curious, and this has no bearing on a decision one way or the other, but have you had any feedback from Kenny Bunkport in terms of what you're planning on doing and positively, negatively suggestions on what they'd like to see you do with the property and?
And they know me well, no, not a word. I've done some stuff with, you know, the CEO over there. With Werner, and he's never, I don't even, well, he knows I own this property. I don't know if he knows I'm proposing anything, but they really have experience.
I'm just saying, you're right on his.
Right across the street.
That's right.
I think Marty's question.
When we start this in earnest.
The limitation that you're looking at is that it has to have either water or sewer.
Yeah, but if you have water already running to the Grange, so you have that area there, Winx, and there's several buildings along that area.
They could do something with it, but if you go further up Lock Haven Road, then you don't have water and you don't have sewer.
Correct, you have to extend it.
So the multifamily aspect would not apply unless you were willing to extend it up.
Correct, but it stops roughly at Senate Road?
At Senate Road, yeah.
I don't know exactly where it ends.
It stops right about here.
Right where the church is, is that?
Yeah.
On what side of the road? No, that would be on the church side of the road, if I remember correctly.
Why? Why would it be on the church side?
Because I think that's where the fire hydrant is up on that side.
This is where the line, this purple line, that's the water line. This is Lock Haven.
So it would be on the church side?
This is the church, it's on this side.
I'm just curious, not for this conversation, but for education, what difference does it make with that of the water?
Because.
Who's going to be paying the taxes if it's on the church side? That's Kenny Bunkport.
But the other factor is, if somebody wants to extend water lines, then either you have to drill under or you have to do an open cut in the road.
Yeah.
That's where I'm coming at in my question.
But sometimes there's a more.
But for you, it doesn't matter, because it doesn't impact you one way or the other. You have enough septic and you have the water.
And, but further to your point, I think everybody understands it, there's still a lot of things that have to be met for any other property.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
The water, the sewer they designed, the sewer they built. But, you know, I understood your question, it's what else would this affect, what other properties, what can people do with it, so forth.
Now, the other factor of thought is too, I mean, are you going to have sprinkling system in there?
First of all, the building's already plumbed for, in infrastructure with sprinkling. It's not operating.
No, 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 just.
But we have it throughout the whole building.
That's a decision that the fire chief will be making.
Exactly, I was even, even today, that subject came up, I might even be looking for some direction on where to go for those sort of state permits and requirements and all that, but the building has it, because it used to be a, you know, it's been many things, I think, obviously. So, you know, was it daycare center?
Yeah, they have one time, college.
Yeah, and it was college, college. So it was, I don't know. What's that?
It was incubator approved for incubator business phase 21, whole office unit.
So the sprinkling system is all in.
Have you considered anything with 55 and over?
Someone mentioned that to me, you're the second person. Are you 55, are you over 55?
Yeah.
I'll come talk to you.
Don't need it.
Someone mentioned that to me, Marty, I don't know anything about it. Someone.
It is a pot to throw out there.
Exactly, that's what this guy said.
Well, given the reduction in size that you're looking at, then I'm not sure, 55 and over would make that much of a difference. If it's 55 and over, there is a density bonus, but I'm not sure that you would qualify.
I don't even know, I don't know anything about what bonus is applied. Someone mentioned to me as far as being a good market, that's all.
But the other thing is, you're not burdening the town with the prospect for the school system. That was the other factor.
Yep. With all these beautiful school buildings.
You guys need. Be between the lines.
Do you live in?
I'm being nice.
Nearby.
But you don't live in Arundel?
Not the same thing.
Nearby.
Okay.
No, I live in Kenny Bunkport.
I was gobsmacked at the school taxes.
In?
In Arundel.
Yeah, I don't even know.
They're my fault.
Anyway, I appreciate your coming and giving us time. As soon as we get a completed application submitted to Tad, we can get you put on the agenda, and we can start this process.
No, we still have, you have to have the changes in the ordinance before they could be.
Oh, yeah, as far as, we need the zone, text them.
We need to do the zone thing. Thank you, Marty, I forgot all about that.
I thought you just approved it.
No, we're discussing.
Do you need anything more than what we've done to this point?
I don't think, yeah, I'm not going to speak for the board and how do I feel.
You are clear that we don't, it's not up to us to approve it.
Right.
Right, so basically you have to have a public hearing process and then recommendations on to the board as likely.
So the only other thing.
Since nobody showed up.
Well, what's the board think? I mean, what does this, excuse me, I'm going to jump in here. What is the board's opinion? This is a significant increase in density in this particular area, and the question is, this will apply to this entire district?
Given the restrictions of the water and the sewer, I don't have a problem with it.
It assumes that nobody will extend the water.
If they extend the water, or they, they're still going to have to have enough sewer, the same way this gentleman has to have a facility that can handle everything. So if you extend the water and you can show that you've got the HHE2000, or whatever it is, that will handle the sewer, I don't have a problem with it.
I think the enhanced intensity of the use that's proposed is ameliorated by the fact the district itself is so geographically small.
The only thing I'd like to mention, which I think you already know, but while we're here, as far as my proposal, meaning nothing to do with the whole district, but we're creating no more hardscape. We're taking, I'm taking, proposing to take the existing building, which gets, you know, operates as a business, cars coming and going all the time, and an apartment. Taking the building and just making apartments and doing away with the commercial.
You believe that, that nice design?
Oh, I intend to, or my architect will.
Incorporate it?
No, she will have my head.
Yeah, because that's really.
I'm proposing anything that touches the exterior. She lives in Bedford Pool, her name is Lucy Fontaine, you wouldn't know her.
She bought a great house.
Do you like her house?
Yeah.
I do too, but a lot of people go to Pool though.
She did a lot of the landscaping.
Oh, that's Bedford Pool.
Oh, it's Bedford Pool.
Yeah.
But, so she lives down there, you know where the post office is? Couple of houses coming back up the hill on the same side as the post office, and as Corinne mentioned.
Yep.
I mean, you can't miss her house. That's where, she works out of her house, she just retired from teaching architecture for, you know, a long time, decades.
So what does the rest of the board think about this, Marty?
Question two. Propose is eight, what would the difference be instead of dividing it in half, which is 20 now, to 10?
The 10 does have an impact, but the 10 also is a case where, you know, when you look at multifamily, you know, look at zoning around, you know, the 8,000, actually, for multifamily, they range between 6,000 and 8,000 square feet for multifamily type uses. 10,000, if you're looking down, I mean, there are 10,000 square foot lots for single-family homes. So the 8,000 really falls more in the realm of being able to achieve a density for multifamily, which are the apartments. It's not necessarily looking at it from the standpoint of creating, you know, larger dwelling type units.
Okay, now, question also, your unit, is it a two-bedroom unit? Is it a one-bedroom?
What I.
Thinking of, I mean.
Yeah, exactly, what I'm drawing up would be five two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom.
That's why I'm just thinking, because if you had, let's say, you know, 10,000, does that give you more space for qualifying for a two-bedroom? I mean, instead of 8,000 for, I mean, on a different lot, that's what I'm trying to say.
A different lot.
That's where I'm thinking of, it's like a duplex or anything else, depends on your lot size, or anything else along that way, that's why I'm asking.
Well, the 10,000, the 10,000 square feet is actually less density than the 8,000 square feet.
So, Tad, quick question, does the 8,000 square foot designation that you guys are proposing for your small piece of this, does that become the tail that wags any other part of the townhouse district? So does that make all the other things that get developed in that area, 8,000 square feet or less, or?
Not less.
Or 8,000 square feet on the dot, or between 8 and 10, or?
It could be any place on the other side of 8, it couldn't be less than 8.
Can't be less than 8.
It's a minimum of 8,000 square feet. And again, that's not the unit size, it's the lot area.
That's a blanket, that becomes a blanket designation.
Richard, you had mentioned there's a lot there that I think you said it had 16,000 square feet. Well, my point of that is that you could have a multifamily with two units on that lot.
Actually, it's the four lots that comprise Winx. I think it's the one closest to.
Winx.
Maybe the one that's the smallest of the lot.
Next door was. Next door to Winx.
But yeah, that could conceivably have two, but that would be the limit that they could put.
Correct, but again, they would have to have the land area to put in a subsurface waste disposal, so.
And you probably would not, definitely.
Right.
Not on 16,000.
No.
Well, I think, I have a few thoughts. One is that I wish, my old take was going to be, if everybody, all the neighbors were all right, that own property there, then why not? I wish we had some in for it, but we can't make them.
Yeah.
Well, we might at the public hearing, I mean, you don't know.
Would be nice to get it early, so that's one thing. The other is, I think we should encourage multifamily in this town, I think there's a need for it. On the other hand, once we increase, oh, we, yeah, we increase the density here, it will be proposed in other areas as well. Why not the highway zones and the other, whatever one is.
Gateway district.
Gateway, so we have to think, it's not just this one property, it's not just this one zone, it will be.
Why isn't it just this one zone, though? Doesn't any other zone have?
Once the barn doors open, it's.
Still within, still within your right to say yes or no, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
It is, and it's not necessarily an inherently bad thing.
Yeah.
No, it's not, but still, it's going to change. Since I've been in town 28 years, there's been one acre minimum, or two, or three, and this will change that, with some caveats. one acre minimum, or two, or three, and, and this, this will change that. It, with, with some, some caveats, but I think this will change the formula a little bit. It will, it will.
I think, yeah, I, I agree, it will, it will change, um, some of the pressures on other zones, but I think the, the fact that we are saying you have to have either water or sewer is going to, i- if it puts pressure on the other zones, it's gonna put pressure on the selectmen to get it done.
I guess, at, at some point, it, it would be worth investing in sewer going up Route One and that whole zone, could, why not have the.
Right, yeah, 'cause if, if you can sustain it, yeah.
That will follow.
Agreed.
To, to your point about, well, there's nobody here from that zone. They've had, they've had adequate notice. And, and then, as I said two weeks ago at the meeting, if nobody shows up, I'm gonna take that as a sign that they really don't care.
Yeah.
And, and if, because if they cared, they should be here.
Until town meeting.
Wait until, until town meeting. You could very well get shot down at town meeting.
Or, or at least post the come. I mean, if, if somebody's out of town or anything else within the realm of having, now, how does that affect also to, uh, what they call these weekend stayers?
Weekend stayers.
Yeah.
Short-term rentals.
How would that affect short-term rentals in this, this area?
We have no regulation else that we have on short-term rentals.
No, I'm just, I'm throwing it out as a general question.
This would encourage short-term rentals. Compared to places, it's not going to encourage in some places, but in places, the closer we are to the water, the closer we are to the canterbones.
Or.
Sure.
Location for it.
Absolutely.
So I have a question.
We already have.
Wink's doesn't.
Wink's does short-term rentals.
So, uh, and I'm sorry if this is onerous, and you may not have all the answers, but, um, again, since I'm sort of a neophyte, I'm trying to understand what the total net effect is of ma- doing this development. So, we now know by changing the lot size to eight thousand square feet that that all of a sudden changes, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, future lot sizes if the people.
I'll try and correct part of that.
Okay, well.
It's not, it's not asking to reduce the lot size, it's asking to reduce the minimum lot area per dwelling unit.
Right.
So it doesn't change your underlying zone, but your minimum lot size, correct me if I'm wrong.
For a single family.
For a single family.
Yeah.
That all stays the same.
Right, but for multifamily, it becomes eight thousand square feet or greater. Am I correct?
For residents.
For residents.
Per unit.
And then, any of these developments have to have either water or sewer, meaning town water or town sewer.
Right.
Is there anything else that we haven't discussed this evening that by giving, granting you permission to do this, that we've missed and not discussed, that we should know about? Besides the eight thousand square feet and water and sewer?
And by the way, it's not, it's not water and sewer.
Water or sewer.
Right, yeah.
Oh, that, that I get.
Since you don't have sewer, that would be the next one.
And, and again, part of this whole, this element comes down to, where you don't have public sewer, you have to have onsite septic. You have to have all the soils that are suitable for it.
Right.
The soil's information in this area, they're all Progen or Namburg soils. Namburg is on the varying edge of when and where you could have subsurface waste disposal systems. So you've gotta have the land area to support the number of bedrooms in order to achieve the density you're looking at. So.
So what else?
So that's.
What else have we missed? Have we missed anything else?
I have the, the wording of the petition?
Well, no.
Okay. I, I, I didn't know if they had brought something up.
No, and what we, what we had discussed was bringing it to the planning board. Now, if the planning board wants to work with the applicant, then the, then, then the applicant and staff can work on the wording and come up with a proposal for you, for the planning board to proceed with. I think you also, we're gonna have to notify the complaint committee themselves, don't wanna know about that. This is an extension of what they've already approved for this district, but don't want them winding up, coming up at the.
Leopeth House.
At the Leopeth House.
So, so what do you guys think? Are you willing to work on getting this, uh, is only one that's changed? Or do we tell them, you're on your own and go collect signatures?
I, I think tearing collecting the signatures may not have, uh, the full answers because we don't know what's on this, the signature. If we work together, that way it can cover all bases, so we don't have another landmine or something else along the way.
I agree with him, Sam, with that, Mike, but yeah, I'd, I'd rather work on it than have it come to us and, and we can't change it because it's been approved on by petition, so.
Yeah, 'cause I'd gladly go with signatures.
I mean, I don't have any objection, as long as I understand that I'm not missing anything, that are, that there isn't going to be a name for name.
Susan, I would, I would only add that all the questions you're asking are all directed the same way, and I get it, I, we all get it. They're directed the same way. There is no looking past the fact that this would open up other possibilities, certainly within the townhouse district. You guys know all the properties there, you know the possibilities there, but they still have to meet a lot of critical criteria. It doesn't mean they can't. But you still, you know, the, the criteria required still serves as a check balance. But you're, you're absolutely right.
I, I have to ask the question because we have our decisions before us, and, you know, sometimes we, uh, you know, we wanna go along and make it happen and things like that, and, and not all of us, really speaking about myself, understand the full import of what some of the decisions are that we're making. And that's so, I'm asking you to respond to me by telling me that I can be somewhat confident in the fact that we've covered what the, you know, the.
The important points.
The important points and how the changes.
And I believe we have.
And I, I think as we sit down when, and, and work together and develop the wording for it, then we get covered. We'll make sure that all of those things are taken care of. Hang on just for a second. Any questions?
None.
Yes.
Okay, Marty. I wanted to check with you, and he's been awfully quiet tonight.
No, the other thing is, I would suggest contact Kennybunkport. The reason I'm saying that is, is because there are some, several properties that are in the townhouse district that are in Kennybunkport.
Yes, not, definitely not several.
There's, there's, there's.
One or two.
I think there's one next to Wink's.
Well, I'm just saying, what I'm just, why, I'm just saying that the fact is.
Quite a sound in the townhouse corner.
It's not in the townhouse corner district.
Right.
It's in Kennybunkport.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm referring to is where the district is, okay? Yes, it's cut out because it's in Kennybunkport. But what I'm saying is that if they have communication with Kennybunkport, that particular land or landowners that are there could also take the same opportunity. That's where I was going at the question.
Okay.
I mean.
It's a valid point, but I, I'm sure.
I mean, it's not gonna affect, it's not gonna affect us, but I'm just trying to say so that it's covered in the full circle. So it, 'cause at Kennybunkport, they, they adopt the same thing as what we do, and allows the owners of that property and what I call townhouse district, the same.
Well, my, my point would be that if, if, if we're going to pursue this and go forward with it, then we should be the good neighbors and notify Kennybunk. The planning board should be, should notify them, we're looking at doing this.
And you said that, Tad, you.
Yes, I'll, I'll.
They may have the idea so much that they wanna do it on the Kennybunk.
Is there anybody that does not wanna work with these gentlemen?
Rich Townhouse.
Yes, I would just observe, uh, I haven't been that contributory. I, I don't think I'm precluded from listening and commenting and so forth. If it came to voting on anything, I probably would abstain. I have a close family member that's in the district. The property would be affected.
Okay. I just, you hadn't said anything, I don't know. I never thought about that, but, but I appreciate that.
You want to compromise your decision-making capabilities, or do you wanna avoid that?
I wanna avoid that. I, I know that it wouldn't, I'd, I'd give it a fair shake, and I, and I know which way I'd go on this.
But yes, uh, work, work, work it out with Tad, get, get some details, get, get back before us, and we can tear it all apart and put it all back together again.
Sounds good.
Now, uh, notify, notify, notify Kennybunkport and Kennybunkport. And I will probably send that to another notice to.
Oh, absolutely. We should, we should be now, that the workshop was held and we're now gonna just go forward.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next up on the list is the pending application from Two Boys Automobiles Salvage and Traditional Use Renewal. A proposed application to renew an existing permit to continue operation of an, of an existing eighty-five thousand square foot plus or minus automobile salvage area on a three-point-six acre site located in Two Irving Road, tax math nineteen, Lot Six, in the Onward District. Two Boys Livestock is the applicant, as the applicant, and the purpose tonight is to report on the site walk, which was done last Saturday.
It was.
Do we have, do we have?
Jane, the three of us were there.
Three.
The three of us. So we meet, we meet the new request, including Jamie.
Including Jamie, but Jamie's not here, but it doesn't only take three?
You got, you got two out of three. It's a majority.
We can make a report in terms of how we did.
We're subcommittee.
We, we walked, we went out, we met with these fine gentlemen, we walked down, we looked at the boundaries of where everything is, saw that the entire world was covered in snow. There were some questions that were raised about, about the berm, which, which got answered and resolved. And I can't speak to how Susan or Jamie felt. I thought it was fine, and, and I don't think, I don't see any prob- The biggest problem I have is that the submission for the renewal is late. This should've been renewed back in December? That's it. November, December.
So we, we submitted it.
And it got lost.
It lost it.
Well, I don't, I can't speak to that. I can only say that I think it was late. But we're going to, we're going to go forward with it because there, because there does seem to be some ambiguity as to what happened. So we're gonna say, fine, that's not a big deal. We will look at it. Going forward, in three years, you guys need to make sure that we get that application and have acted on it before the old one expires.
Okay.
And that's, that's the only thing then. I don't wanna hold you up because.
Is that all we're doing on that tonight? Are we got?
No, you have to set up a hearing.
Well, there's two, um, applications, but.
Right.
Do you need a public hearing?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, we need, we need to schedule a public hearing on, on the renewal, um, which we can do for the next meeting in.
February thirteen.
February, February.
Let's, let's look at the application and make sure that all of the, the boxes are checked off and there's nothing that.
I wasn't there at the site lock where the other requirements fulfilled.
Thirteen.
Yes, the map and then.
Yes, all of that information was delivered beforehand.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah, because the, the application form has a, it, it contemplates us, uh, getting informed as to whether things get submitted or not.
Yeah, that, but, but that would have to get checked off either by us or by the town planner.
By you, because that's what you just did, your, your.
We, we decided that we would be doing the checklist to make sure that we had everything.
Okay, right. You just pass that in your files.
Okay, so there's, there's no utilities out there? No drainage, there's no drainage facilities out there? Okay. No proposed site improvements?
Trevor, you might wanna just go down the list.
Yeah. Okay.
From the top to bottom, and this is what you've.
Starting at the very first one. Location of existing, oh, sorry, other one, one.
Property boundary survey?
Yes. Property boundary, boundary survey, signed and sealed by a main licensed land surveyor, showing bearings and distance in subject property boundaries, containing North Arrow graphic scale acreage, property corners, date of survey, and location of adjacent lots and owners' names. What we have is something from Al Frick. This must've been back. This looks like it says April of two thousand. I think I'm right.
April of two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten, okay.
At that time, the board accepted GPS coordinates. A little of a.
This is not a boundary survey, right?
No, it's not a boundary survey. It was a location within a larger parcel. The area of the auto graveyard is within the parcel, not on a boundary of the parcel.
Right.
So the board, that's what you decide back in two thousand ten.
So, so where are the, where are the supporting documents then?
Your answer?
Other than the application? Because other materials came in, is that right?
We sent you guys everything, the map, whatever it was we posted.
That's all attached on the application.
That's just, that's the way it's always been. The documents for the, um, like where the posts are and stuff out there was back, that's what we did back then, and that's the same post. Like we showed you the post, that's the post. It never changed to show where the corners of the junk at and stuff.
The telephone post cut off, that, that showed the, the location of the thing, and that's sort of the map of it. It hasn't changed in twenty years, thirty years.
That's where this, this will, will come in.
At least here.
Are we going to accept the map that we have, which is from two thousand and ten and has the GPS, um, coordinates on it? Or are we going to require, uh, another, uh, site plan?
I, I would suggest that to the extent that we already have things from the prior submission that they got approval on, we don't need to keep collecting paper.
Yep.
It doesn't make any sense. All right, so if there's something new, then that's a different thing. We should get that. But other than that, if it's already in the property file?
I don't think there's, there isn't a survey of this, it's just the GPS coordinates.
And that was adequate then?
You don't have this, huh?
Yeah, no, that's what, that's what we have from two thousand and two.
What we don't have is, we don't have a property survey of that.
It never did.
Or a property survey of the whole parcel, which identifying that within that entire parcel. No, we don't have a property survey.
I'd, I'd rather not revisit that. I think we, we have this and.
I think, I think the fact that we've had this all along, and that's what we have been looking at.
And over the years before two thousand and ten, we've visited it many times, okay? For being one of the, the seniors here, okay? The fact is, it's, uh, it's one parcel, but it's part of the parcel is being used, okay? Possibly for the next renewal, all right? It can be drawn out of this by itself using the GPS coordinates.
But that's what, that's what this.
I realize that, but I'm just saying for breaking it down. And possibly for the next renewal.
I think for the next renewal, you should just have, don't you think we should have some other survey of the land other than the GPS coordinates that were? I mean, we have another application that's coming up, and everybody seems to have a different idea of how much property is actually there and what the coordinates are and blah, blah, blah.
But the coordinates sort of change because we get the post there. That's what the posts are for, so it never changes. The whole, all that we showed you.
And I, I agree on, on the next application, there are some issues that have to be looked at. I'm just thinking on this one. We renewed this in two thousand and ten, we did this in two thousand and thirteen, or fourteen, and we did it. We should've done it. Did we do, yeah, we did it in seventeen.
Yeah.
So, given the fact that we've renewed this all every time, using the, using this particular map.
Right.
I don't have a problem relying on this map, even going forward, uh, uh, because we go out, we do the sidewalk, we take a look at everything. We can look at it and say, oh, okay. And, and we all have cell phones, so we can all call up GPS, standing on a particular plot of land. It's not gonna be totally accurate, but it's.
I don't know. I don't think I can do that on my, my flip phone.
Yeah, no. Yeah, no.
He said all of us.
Ladies and gentlemen, we also, we also every single year go to the Board of Selectment, use the same maps and everything, and they approve us every year. We we come to you every three years and to the Selectment every year for the same licensing.
Now, I'm just saying, I don't see a reason that we can't continue to rely on this. We go out, we do the sidewalk, we make sure that things have not changed.
Right, the posts are there.
And then we can rely on a map. It wouldn't be any different than if, you know, I've got a a survey on my on my house, so when I go to sell my house, here's the survey. This is what, this is where the property line is. That's all I'm saying.
We've got, we have several things though. Have a dozen anyway, or more?
There's more than that.
Yeah. A dozen, a dozen, yeah, a dozen. And there's this, presumably these things were submitted before, but we we don't have them here. Oh, we have the map, right?
The applicant has asked, I mean, what you have is the applicant has asked for things that, stated things that do not apply, or they request to be waived, and that's what the planning board has to go through. In this situation, the applicant has basically said that they've had previous, the planning board's previous activity has always been to approve this location within a larger lot based upon location of posts and GPS coordinates. And if the planning board wants to change that, that's fine. But what they're doing here is instead of saying submit by the applicant, they're asking for this property boundary to be waived. This has been waived, this requirement has been waived repeatedly since in the last ten years.
So we we've been talking about number one, but that really applies as we go down through many of these items that are indicated as being submitted by the applicant. They are
Oh, we have a site plan.
Submitted by inference.
Right, and that's why I was suggesting that the next time you renew in three years, you should have a survey that's something other than this.
That's a, that's not an insignificant expense.
Well, it asks though for on this particular survey, unless it has more documents in terms of streams and watercourses, wetlands, and so on and so forth. That's, none of that is indicated on this particular.
The way it's designed, the posts are at the setback of three hundred feet from the brook. That's what the post is. That's marking the brook, and that's showing what the posts are. That was the setback, that's the meat from the brook. That's what the boundary becomes of the, that's kind of why the junkyard shaped the way it is, is because of the setbacks from the brook that goes through the property. You know, as far as the posts that are there and the boundaries, that's what the setbacks are, and that's why, no, it doesn't change. It stays.
I haven't surveyed it. It would do nothing more than just cost us extra money for for something that that doesn't change anything. The the GPS, what you have there, is exactly where it's at. It hasn't moved in decades.
And usually if there's no snow, like a lot of times when you go, we walk around the outside of it. The only difference, we didn't, because there was snow, but then you see where each one of the posts is.
But it would be memorialized in your file, and then there would never ever be a question down the road about what was what, where it, where it is.
If this is memorialized, it's got a post in each corner.
Why is the, is the GPS, it was it was an acceptable moralization, you know, for the last, you know, fifteen or sixteen years.
Well, I mean, I'll defer to your judgment. My my thought is, next time, they should have something more than that as their plot map. But if you think because it's been approved so many times, it should just keep on being approved and submitting the same documents every three years or whatever, then, you know, I defer to your judgment.
Well, the other difference was too, it's not on a property line of somebody else, stuff like you mentioned.
Yeah, and that's where I'm comfortable with this, because.
You know, that's what made the difference.
You want everything around it.
Yeah, that was the other reasoning back then and why.
I think your your feeling so is that you you like to see some things vigilized on a on a plan. I I understand that. But the way this is written to produce exactly that way it's written here would be a boundary survey of the entire parcel, which would not be, I mean, that's a large parcel, is it not, gentlemen?
Yes.
And there would have to be some interior surveying too. So we're not just talking about perimeter survey, we're talking about
Right.
interior survey, we're talking.
But that's the salvage yard?
Ah, ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
Right. It's not a very active junkyard.
Well, you know what, on that point, as I looked at this thing, it it occurred to me, why do these guys wanna do this? This doesn't strike me as economically sensible, given what's going on around you, as being the highest and best use of this property. Seems to me.
Some people go by and they probably wonder what you do for a living and why you would pursue it.
Well, well, now I may be revealing my ignorance about the the economics of running a salvage yard. I don't really know anything about it. But I do know that guys make a killing, if they do it correctly, in residential development. And that's what's going on around you guys.
But what it is, it supports our stuff. It's our equipment, you know, for parts and stuff of what we run, you know.
New, or you go in the junkyard and get it because it's there.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting don't run one. I'm just saying, this seems to be going through a lot when there's another use for the property, which doesn't preclude you guys doing a salvage yard somewhere.
How did I use? We have a lot of things in the file.
Yeah, that you do. I agree with that. But, you know, even just just tonight, we're dealing with two other residential subdivisions on Irving Road. So that seems to be where things are going in this, in in that part of town.
Well, from my perspective, the fact that we have allowed this, if if we were looking, if we had gone out and we had seen changes and we could see signs where a bunch of stuff had been moved around, I would be saying, yes, you need to give us a map. If it's ten grand, it's ten grand. Spend the money and give us the map. But we're not seeing that kind of activity. So I'm I'm quite content with the fact that we have GPS markers on here that tell us where it is. And if at some point somebody comes in and complains and says, well, no, you know, that's not where it's at, we have the capability of going out and finding out whether or not that's true.
Right.
You know, just stand out there.
We got poles in there.
Jason doesn't think I could use a cellphone to do it, and he's probably accurate. It's not gonna be really that accurate in terms of of these locations. But it's a, it's a way to measure it and say, you know, where where is it in terms of what the map looks like? So I would, you know, I'm quite happy to continue forward with the map and with the submissions that we've had in the past. If you, if this were the first time doing it, yeah, no, I'm sorry, all of this other stuff, yeah, it has to be done. But you, we do have it on file. And and I'm not sure that that making you jump through the hoops of spending that money again is worth it, especially if it's not gonna change anything.
And I wasn't suggesting that you should survey the entire piece of property. What I was suggesting is you have a better view of what your salvage yard is.
To survey that, they're not kidding. It'll cost you ten thousand dollars.
You don't just survey the inside. You gotta start from.
Yeah, you better start and have your distances laid out, yeah.
Get your bearing marks from point A to point B to find this corner here.
But that covered, that covers the first, first two pages of of all of the various items that are in there. The rest of it does not apply. At least I don't think it does. I could be wrong.
We we kind of take the old ones that we have and check the boxes that, so we do the same thing every time. I mean, we're we're.
Yeah, nothing's changed with the gentleman.
Yeah, it's just, it's the same questions every time, every year with the select board, Selectment, we do it, and then when we come here every three years, we do the, we do the same thing, and there's and the CEO comes out every year and checks the the boundaries, and they do it in the summertime, as I remember, so that so that there's no no snow, so he gets to see everything. And sees what's within the boundary.
And if he saw something wrong, he'd probably let you know about it.
Oh, in a second.
I think, in fact, I wanna just say that the the whole intent of this renewal is just to catch something that that's going wrong.
Yeah.
And if nothing's going wrong, there's no evidence of it, I I think it should be just as seamless as possible, just just move it on. I I don't want it to be so with catching someone or making them jump through hoops that that they've already been through a number of times.
You go through it the first time and you submit your application.
And then as long as they're doing what they said.
Yeah, they're gonna do.
Okay.
Right, that's what I mean. We're not, I can see if we're expanding it or, you know what I mean, but we're not. It's just.
Do you see anything in here that we need to be going over?
I don't, I don't. I I'm I'm satisfied, but.
Uh, no, I, as I said, I'll defer to your judgment. I just, you know, think eventually documents, and maybe it's, this is a bad example, that files should be updated and maps should be done in accordance with what the new terms are, and it only helps the town and it helps the landowner. But if this is grandfathered and you wanna continue to use the map in perpetuity, then or be it for me to tell you that you can't. So I'll, you know, I'll defer to your judgment.
Not only in perpetuity, I'm sure at some point we'll see a subdivision application.
So.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Can I get a full-size map of this?
Yes.
I need that for my files. Okay.
I would, I would say that.
Because the planning board needs to sign the full-size one.
The, to your point, the way the ordinance is right now, we would have to amend the ordinance to require every ten years or or fifteen years, you bring a completely brand-new set of documents so that we can verify all of the activity.
And maybe that's something we should consider, but I don't think we should make them the scapegoats
No.
of that change. So, as I said.
Tom, any?
Up to you guys.
Go.
Marty?
Go. Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Thirteenth.
On the thirteenth of February. Don't go in.
We don't need to vote on it?
Yeah.
Because you're the next, the next item to give. New applications.
We have to vote on.
You have to vote on.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we do. We do have to vote on a public hearing.
Would that, your your motion I'll second.
I do.
Marty did.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. They have a public hearing on February thirteenth. Any discussion?
I think we've had plenty.
There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Now we'll move on to the subdivision. Pre-application, a proposal to develop a five to six lot cluster subdivision with a five hundred foot private right, private way on a fourteen point three nine acre lot located at twenty-three Irving Road, tax map nineteen, lots one and one B in the R four and the shoreline zones. Randrick Trust is the owner and Jason is the applicant.
We're just skipping the last name now?
I just skipped the last name.
He hasn't said it for months.
I haven't been able to say. Mafias. Okay, so I'm looking, you're telling me that lot one and one B are in the R four and the shoreline?
There's a, there's a ten acre wetland, which puts it in the shoreline zone.
Well, it just doesn't tell me where the the other lots are located. And I was looking at it going, okay, so we have two lots in the R four and the shoreline zone. Would I have, I don't know where the other
What did you say for the other lots? Are they, are they all on R four?
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, so.
It implies that they're in another district.
This is a somewhat.
The warning did it. It made me wonder.
This is a lot that's been split a couple of times, so that it gets, it's a, it's a weird size, and I do have a full boundary survey on it. We just got that in, so I can explain what's going on a lot better than probably you can figure out by looking at the plan.
So as a, as a pre-app, we're gonna have to schedule a sidewalk.
Yeah, that's mostly what I was trying to do, is get, I had two right next to each other, so we.
No snow?
Uh, no, probably with more snow, probably with more snow on the ground.
It's supposed to rain too.
There's a wonderful crust, you know, with the shins on it.
Yeah, well, that's what we call those ankle cutters.
Look at the shape of this thing.
So, yeah, so let let me back up a little bit. I'm gonna draw with my pen right now so you guys can actually see. But so these are, lot one is up here, tax mapping nineteen lot one. Lot one B is this parcel here, which I'm I'm about to draw. So it's a, we call, I call it a dumbbell lot. So it's got like a narrow isthmus going down, and then it actually, it actually extends down further this way. So we have full wetlands, investigation, soil tests, and boundary surveying, but this lot, lot one B is sixteen point zero one acres for the.
What is working out, because there's all sorts of numbers going around. So this one is.
Sixteen point zero one.
It goes all the way down. The whole dumbbell. That's our number.
Okay. And while we're in here in pre-app, but I'm actually acting as somewhat of an agent for the gentleman behind me. There's a a builder interested in in purchasing this subdivision. He's, he's paying me to to go through and figure out, you know, what we can do and get it approved. In order to maximize the development, we we have, there's actually uplands that's down on the backside of the the barbell or the dumbbell. You'd never be able to get it, you'd never be able to get down there. So we're, what what the plan is, is what we've discussed, is to incorporate the uplands from the abutting lot, which is actually a larger lot. I think it's nineteen acres. I have that boundary survey. I just can't remember off the top of my head. We're gonna do a lot line adjustment prior to preliminary submittal to get the net residential density counts up to five lots. So basically, this lot here had nine point two acres of uplands out of the sixteen point zero one. So we need to add five point eight acres of uplands from this lot
From lot one.
to get, yes, from lot one, to get to a net resident density of five lots, which makes this a a a marketable product for the builder. So that's what's gonna happen by the time you see.
Now, this, this thing that says Dutch Home Golf Course, is that the third hole?
No, so.
Who is this man?
So so the golf course is at at least two Tiger Woods drives away. But this is all undeveloped land owned by the golf course, yeah. And it's actually quite a large, what what happens out here is this is where you see the NA, these are Nohmberg's. We were talking about that. Nohmberg's are typically very flashy wet soils. And the problem out here is why you have this large shoreline zone, wetland, is that it's sort of landlocked and it dri, it dribbles out in a couple of different areas. This area right here, actually, I think eventually drains the Brimstone Pond, comes under a roadway culvert, which is located up here, goes this way, transfers down low.
So if I'm coming down Irving Road, where would that first lot be in relation to the farm?
So as you take the bend, Irving Road, it's probably, I'm gonna say, the roadway entrance would be about twelve hundred feet from coming out of the bend on the left.
On the left, okay.
It's between the two houses, basically. It's between Rick's house and.
Nope, it's before the two houses. Oh, right, it's between Rick's house and and the new.
The yellow house, the relative to the new yellow.
So you see, it's, it's got a partially cleared area in the front. It's like a field, and then it's woods.
Jason, is that sort of in, to be clear, you're gonna be purchasing property up above?
So so under main state law, you can do a lot line adjustment between abutting lots, and it doesn't count as a split or anything. So what we're doing is we're gonna, we're gonna amend lot one B to have fifteen acres of uplands so that we can do a five lot.
Is that, is that the the location of the of the lots that with that?
So the lots will actually, this will be open space up here, and then this will all be open space.
So you won't be developing?
No, no, no.
This will stay the same?
Stay the same.
Yep. And then what we probably would do was save, would save a right of way. There's actually a decent uplands back here, so I always like to think of what can happen in ten, fifteen years. So we probably save a, we would save a right, why this isn't a cul-de-sac is that we would have a right of way that could go back here as the future if anyone sold.
Can you come a little closer?
Sure, yep.
Okay, thank you. Here, just stand up so we can all see exactly what you're talking about here. So.
So, yeah, this is, you're gonna see, this is all upland back here. So what we're talking about is leaving this as a right of way, so that they could access, someone could, you know, another person could come along, send this road, in the future develop this, but this would remain open space.
So these would be the, excuse me, five lots?
These would be five lots.
And what are the approximate size of each one of those?
Uh, twenty-five to forty thousand.
But, and they have to be a minimum of three, three acres, is that right?
Uh, under norm, I, when it's on a cluster.
Okay, so.
So you can go down to twenty thousand square feet when you do a cluster subdivision, as long as you can get passing septic and well on each lot.
And can you?
So this, this makes nothing here, or is that, that is?
No, this'll, this, this is the line to be.
That is the line, okay.
So who comes to be?
Yeah, they just, they just have to have, well, for five, for five lots, they have to have fifteen acres of buildable land, they just can't, they won't be building on it.
Yes.
With the cluster, including the two, forever open space.
So.
All right, just help me bear, bear on this.
So this is forever open space?
Yes.
Up here, and this, and this is.
Except for whatever we carved up.
Right.
Right, and this is as well.
And that'll be, and, right, yeah, so this would be, this would all be open space.
Except three quarters of it will be open space.
Yes, because you can't, you don't wanna build it.
Jason, on this, which way is the golf course?
Uh, that way.
Cause here's your Irving Road.
That's Irving Road, and then, and then it, it comes out this way and goes that.
That's why I was thinking, you just said that part of the third hole.
The curve's right about here. And this is the big farm, so, and there, there's, uh.
Okay, there's, there's a farm over there.
Yep.
So this is. And the golf course is back here, you know what I mean?
Golf course is way down here, uh, almost way down.
Okay, this is.
Yep.
I, I can't help but, what, I'm curious, why, why not use this to build on, is this upland?
Yeah, that's, that's actually pretty good land, but where, where, part of the deal is to preserve some sort of buffer between, I believe this is Rick's house, yeah, yeah, up here, yeah.
Cause these are. Yeah, but that, that works.
Yeah, and, and actually, there's six there, so they'll end up being five, so what happens is, I'm gonna adjust the lines, yeah, and then, yeah, the lots will end up being, you know, thirty thousand square feet, be the smallest.
So you've done examination on, on where the R four is?
Yes, yes.
Can you give me a plan and show them?
Yes, yeah, we'll have that detailed, yeah.
Okay, and all the other, I mean, the other comments about, comments that I made?
No, no, that was, cause you're, you were, you were operating under, you didn't have what was in my head and your head, so, yeah, I had no problem with what you had in mind.
So we'll be able to address all those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, so.
And the hundred, yeah, the hundred-foot vegetated buffer, yeah, and push my log.
Who do you guys like to do site walks?
Not on Saturday?
No.
No, definitely not on Saturday, not enough time to post it.
I can't post it, I don't know.
You're, 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 you're quick for that, I don't think you're that quick.
I can go backwards.
So we keep looking at.
So you're building on, on lots, is that buildable at all? It looks like it.
No, this is a really great building site, so what we do is we would permit, we would do a notification permit, get a driveway right through this narrow.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, and when I, you guys know when I submit the full thing, I'll actually show you where the houses could go, the wells.
What's, what's the week from Saturday state, do you know? Is it February first?
Uh, week from this Saturday is.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is, it's February first, so. Usually I don't work with this, uh.
Can you guys do a site walk on Saturday, February first?
I don't think you're.
Thanks, no.
I think I can, you have a four-wheel drive vehicle, so we all don't kill ourselves like on ATV.
Well, it's, it's. It's, yeah, it's won't be that far of a walk, I mean, the road's only three hundred feet, so.
Well, we can probably do that.
And I'll have a flag, I'll flag Saturday night.
Flag on everything with various lots on.
I'm trying not to kill, kill myself before my natural end, um, on the ice.
We may have to wrap our ankles and armor.
Why?
Across the, all the rain that freezes, or I'll, I'll break that.
Turn your bear paw, yeah.
So, what are we looking at?
February first.
Okay.
We're gonna say eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty of the year, yes, eight-thirty, we're.
Nine.
February first at eight-thirty.
Nine, we have two nines.
I guess warmer at nine.
We got two nines.
Nine is fine.
Yeah, nine, nine is fine, that's, I'll see it later, that's all.
Bear in mind, we, we may have drive down the road, I don't know how we'll get through the next one, but, yeah, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do this one first, or we'll do this one on, on the first at nine AM, we'll flag everything else, so we know where we're going. Uh, somebody make a motion, please.
All right, one was a reminder, it said also, cause that's why I didn't.
I was, I was surprised that you weren't there.
I forgot. I forgot.
I'll make the motion that we scheduled site walk for February first, at nine o'clock.
And the address is thirty, uh, twenty-three Irving Road.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? There are none? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? I'm assuming that's unanimous, please. Onto a rundle keep.
Project like keeps coming back.
A rundle keep subdivision free application, a proposal to resubmit an expired eight-to-nine lot cluster subdivision with a seven-hundred-foot-long private way located off Irving Road on a fifty-eight-point-zero-two acre parcel, tax map nineteen lot eight, in the R four shore, and shoreline zones. Our rundle keep LLC is the owner, and Jason Vafiades, he is the applicant.
That was perfect. Just watch the tape and practice.
I was practicing.
So this one's, uh, past two houses on the left of the property we were just talking about, and then that gets you down to this point, and actually, the property we were just talking about is right, is right here.
No.
And it bunts it to the back, yeah, uh, so, the reason, the reason I gave you the old plan is I just wanted to show you what it is, and in Tad's, uh, memo, you'll note that he sort of talks, he opines on, you know, is it, is it really an open-space subdivision when the lots are, you know, eighty percent the size of standard lots, and that's all stuff that can change, and actually, I've been playing around with, with this project, and I, I shortened the road and made the lots smaller, um, just kind of for giggles, uh, so this, um, really, cause it came from Tad's comment, uh, but the, one of the, the main things that I think that ought to be discussed is if we're still okay with having two lots, which get their frontage and driveway access off an arterial, or I guess it's on arterial, but it's off a, a collector road, as well as then get the six remaining lots off a, off the proposed roadway.
I'm not, and the reason that I'm not is that you just told an applicant that you know of, no, I'm sorry, those lots have to be in the subdivision and part of the entire package.
Yeah, they'll be in the subdivision, it'll be, so, so this is, this is very similar to Oak Ridge Terrace, yeah, yeah. Two driveways on Oak Ridge Terrace are coming off, one is coming off of South Skilling's Road.
Yeah.
And one is coming off of.
Lowering.
Low, uh, nope, off, off an arterial.
Oh, okay.
And, and we did allow that, but they had to meet the required, the, the, the size requirements of the cluster subdivision, yeah.
Yeah, if they do that, I find, I misunderstood what you were saying.
Yeah, no, that's what we're, so, so these lots will be, what I've done is, is made them smaller, so they'll each, they'll be, I think they're around fifty-five thousand acres, so one point, you know, one point.
Fifty-five thousand acres.
Fifty-five thousand square feet, so one point two acres.
It's just a small lot.
Yeah, yeah, one point two acres.
So is it the same person who had the subdivision approved in two thousand and five?
Yes.
So now he, he or she wants to develop this property, yeah, in two thousand and twenty?
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Twenty twenty.
After, they, they've been talking to me for four and a half years, I told them they're starting to miss their window, so.
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah.
I told them about four and a half years. I think the only issue here is that, I mean.
And we, uh, just to, before you, to jump in, so, I've gone out redilinating the wetlands, we've done, we've updated all the work that would typically require updating, uh, prior to resubmission, so, the boundary survey's still good, um, but we did go up, check pins, and then we, we've updated the wetlands, gone through the soils test, they're still the same, we went to the same spots.
The wetlands are still the same boundary?
Yep, the, the wetlands, actually, they, uh, some of them grew, and other ones we found that was more, uh, this is pit-mounding, uh, situation out back, so we were, we were able to find more uplands, sort of, that, we went through it pretty thoroughly, um, just to see if there's anything out there. Uh, so some of the islands grew a little bit, some of the lines changed, but generally, the numbers are within like ninety-two, ninety-six percent, and it went, there's more wetlands, so they're, yeah.
What time of year? Where's, where's the setback?
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
The setback, that's the only thing that I wanna see as an issue in here.
We did them in August, August and September this year.
What time, rainy?
Uh, there was a lot, yeah, at that point was a lot, but the rain really doesn't, when you delineate, delineating wetlands, the fact that it's raining doesn't, it's, it's the soil, so, it's the vegetation.
Yeah.
It's the, the water table within eleven inches of, um, seven or eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven inches of, of the surface, and then it's also the consistency of the soil. So this would be another project where you'll get a ton of open space.
I was gonna tell you, I didn't really mind the, the larger cluster lots still under the three, so, I think maintaining that hundred-foot buffer that's required along there
Yes.
is actually, you know, the most, more important, because that's one of the things that this board and the conflict committee really wanted to achieve out there.
Yeah.
As a, as a tactic of preserving rural character.
Yes.
But I think, yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we had Raymond, is it Raymond Acres? That had a, an old subdivision plan, or, uh, that was way back when, and there were wetlands that weren't considered all wetlands at one time, and he wanted to use the surveys that were done, uh, at the beginning of the century, the twentieth, twenty-first century, that is, and we said, no, that those rules don't apply, and that he, the new rules applied, and so he had to buy additional land in order to make sure that he was conforming, and I, I'm, I'm short-cutting through this rather than go through the whole thing, and.
That doesn't really, that's not the same.
And isn't that similar to this guy applying for a two thousand, what was a two thousand and five request, permit, whatever? And now it's two thousand and twenty, fifteen years later, and he wants to use the same set of rules that applied in two thousand and five, rather than updating it to two thousand and twenty, isn't that what we're looking for?
No, I think the applicant's preparing to update.
No, everything's gonna be updated, it's all gonna be my, my title.
So it's gonna be conforming with the rules of two thousand and twenty?
Just.
Or what exists now in the.
Yeah, we're, I'm treating this as a new, a, a blank piece of land, other than we inherited a lot of solid information, like the boundary survey, a lot of the CAD, so, but we have already gone out and redilinated the wetlands.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and that was, that's primarily the mo, but we did the veronal pool check, there were no potential veronal pools noted on site, um.
No pods?
What's that?
No pods.
No, no, no.
Thank God.
So, yeah, everything will be up to the current ordinance, even, cause the ordinances were different back.
Right.
So we're, we're reviewing everything under the new ordinances, everything's been updated.
Cause we, we made a few people gray over, uh, you know, having to bring everything up to current standards, and he did it, and, uh.
And this applicant was aware of that when he decided to let the application lapse?
Lapse, yeah.
We had a conversation.
Maybe he saw two thousand and eight coming.
That's right.
Well, the conversation occurred in two thousand.
I agree.
Yeah, they're already lost, but. No, he got an ex, did he get an extension? No.
No, I think he went the two years and he.
He just went the two years and then do it, yeah, that's what happened.
They just, and, and, it was approved in two thousand and five, I think the price he got was hot, higher than he wanted for the infrastructure, um, and then, yes, the things turned, turned, turned away, turned away.
And he, he, uh, got rid of his LLC and in order to be able to sell individual lots and then give him a conclusion, better was cheaper, it was better, he'd get a better return than this one session did. Split there. Okay, so. Ten o'clock?
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking through your notes, and I think we need to find out from the rest of the board. There's a question for the planning board on the notes, does a reduction of point four acres and point four-seven acres from the standard three-acre lot in the R four represent sufficient clustering to meet the objectives of the mandatory cluster ordinance?
What's the requirement, is this three acres here?
Three acres.
If you have a pretty close.
And if you reduce them.
So it'd be almost by a half an acre.
By a half acre.
Both lots, one almost exactly half an acre.
I should point out in doing that also, that there is no minimum requirement or maximum requirement for clustering in our ordinance, as opposed to other cluster ordinances, which require you to only be able to reduce lot sizes down to like twenty-five percent, or fifty percent, depending on the zone. So, we have no required minimum lot standards, uh, for clustering, it was just a, it was a policy question.
That would seem to answer that question.
I think so.
Seems to me.
So that's why I said to you right then and there, well, it's less than three acres, so.
Well, with this parcel, you're getting quite a bit of open space anyway.
You're getting a lot.
But, now, if I had a twenty-acre parcel and I was gonna do six lots, it just happened that only two acres were wet, you know, or had one acre of wetlands, and I did six, you had a narrow strip of open space and two-point-nine-nine, two-point-nine acre lots everywhere.
Right.
I think that, you know, might be a source of discussion, although as you say, there's, there's probably really nothing under your ordinance that could require that to be changed.
Some etymical stuff back in the, in, in section twelve they could play with, but, I mean, to be fair, this is, you know, that's a good size, especially when you're taking a hundred feet away in the front.
Well, yeah, I think, I think the front lots, and that's what I've done, is I made the front ones a little bigger, because you lose a hundred feet off the front.
They should be making use of a lot, I, 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 Mr. Chairman, I, I posed the question, but I'm not seriously worried about the answer.
And it, I'm, I'm honestly not either, because there's a fair amount of space that's going to be, uh, left open.
And it's not all wet.
No, it's actually pretty nice, and you get, there's quite a bit of uplands back there.
So we're gonna, uh, do this as a site walk.
As a site walk right after the other one.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we do the ten o'clock or whatever, we'll all be together anyways, and we just go from one to the other.
Second.
Shall we say ten just for?
Ten, ten.
Pay of purposes?
If a pay of purposes, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Motion has been made, uh, for site walk, uh, on February first at ten AM.
Weather permitting.
It's been seconded, is there any discussion?
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, it's all reasonable.
No, why, I'm saying is we have had February.
Did you second that, too?
I'll second it.
Oh, no, the incident.
Yesterday, I just.
Okay, hearing, hearing, no objections, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fine.
Any opposed? We're gonna have a busy Saturday, February first.
Oh, both of us are very sure.
Well, they're right on the door.
Jason, there's open space back here, how wood it is that?
All wood.
Has that?
It's been cut, it was cut sixteen, seventeen years ago, but selectively cut, so.
We've got, we can state.
Okay, I mean, does, does any of this. Area allow?
I'm not stating it, no.
No, and then re, recut, yeah.
No, you can't, and I, I believe under your ordinances, open space, once it's open space, can't be harvested, now, it could be under forestry, they could go take out deadfall or, or things like that, but it needs to be kept in a.
Natural state.
Generally, natural state.
That's always in the covenants.
Unless, yeah, and if you put something in the covenants, uh, because I happen to be, I, I'm doing a equestrian subdivision in Kennebunk, and their open space is actually gonna be active horse.
Trail, trail riding.
Trail ri, well, and then structures, barns, riding arena, things like that, and so, I, I, I don't, that client looked at a rundle well for something like that, um, and that was actually a question I had, can open space, it can be recreational space as well.
It can be recreational space.
You could actually make it something.
I'm not sure.
Cause homeowners associations can do things within that open space that are recreational in a way.
Right, but I'm not su, I'm not sure putting up a building.
Could be, could be, could be, but, yeah, you couldn't just clearcut it for that, would that be?
No, 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 no.
But I would, I would question whether or not you could put up a building and have all of the recreational use inside that building. Because to me, that defeats the concept of recreational space. I think, I think recreational space is outdoor space, or whatever it's, be it for soccer fields or horse riding, or.
But, but it's for the members of the association.
Common, open.
And if they all wanna do that, then who are we to say no?
Not, not to help you, right, but in Kennebunk, you just have to subtract the building.
We have a, we have a situation.
No, I understand what you're saying.
But the other, you know, we do have the question, we were talking, well, you know, when we're talking to Ronnie about the, about the question subdivision, that, that would have come up, but.
That might be coming back, I guess.
Good, good.
Cool.
It's a good thing, though. Ronnie isn't though.
He just gave me shitters.
That's not good.
So we, we scheduled the sidewalk.
We have scheduled the sidewalk.
Are we good?
We are good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll see, we'll see you guys next week.
Yep.
Uh, no, in two weeks, sorry. In two weeks, and we'll see you in ten days.
No, oh, yeah, February first.
February first.
February first.
The next day upon is other business.
What do you mean, the public area?
Public areas, the thirteen. It's not even over here.
I know. Really?
That's not for the.
Okay, and one end of the table talk to the other end of the table.
We're, we're, we're down here whining, buddy. We got it, we're whining.
He's whining about work. He's gotta go to court. You, you think it, you think it was something serious, like he had to go to, to Washington DC and listen to the Senate.
Oh, that would be, that would be.
That would be anguishing.
Yeah, it would be.
I wouldn't survive the trip, I'd probably ask the pilot to open the plane door at about thirty thousand feet.
I'm sure he would accommodate you.
Yeah, he'd be following me out the door.
So just a quick question, because we make, and I understand why we make so many accommodations, and I, and I understand compromise is important too, but every time we do one of these things where we take our ordinance we ch, and chip a little bit away for one special circumstance or another, are we not making the slope even slipperier than, or more slippery than it already is?
From one perspective, I would agree with you, but from another, you know, the fact that the ordinance is there is it's already such an enormous limitation on property rights. And if, if something can be done without, um, you know, without offending or unreasonably stretching uses, we, we should do that, and that's, that's part of the reason we, we are, we sit as a, as a judicial body.
Yes, and I agree with you, and maybe we should put something, and maybe that makes the slope even slipperier, but, uh, or more slippery, um, but that, you know, just what you just said, that, you know, that there's some flexibility in the ordinance to take into account that it, you know, if situations don't materially change the landscape, the, you know, the character or whatever, that the board and its discretion will, will on occasion, but not as a rule, uh, make exceptions.
And we.
And we did it for Bob Zook's property, cause that would be, his, he reduced the square, you know.
That's cause it was written into the ordinance to do that, we didn't do that at Bourbon Street, well.
Oh, I thought we let him take the shoreline zone and took it from a hundred feet to fifty feet, and we passed that.
We did, but that's written in the ordinance.
Oh, cause that was in the?
That's in the ordinance, but here's the difference, in subdivision, you got a lot more flexibility than you do.
Ted, the camera's facing an audience that isn't there.
Wow, thank you for pointing that out.
I'm sure you're hearing about that.
I mean, they ignore the table.
I just, it's fine. Hey, guys. I was sort of enjoying the fact that I wasn't on camera.
Well, now, I'm doing close, I'm gonna do close-ups of you. I was trying, I was actually trying to give the folks at home an opportunity to see what Bob is talking about, because we had such a wild turnout. The zoning ordinance does not afford flexibility the same way that the, the subdivision ordinance affords, because there are provisions specifically in the, um, subdivision ordinance that allow us to waive requirements under certain circumstances. We have to have a finance effect of why we did it, I'm not sure we've been diligent all the time in doing that. The, uh, the zoning ordinance does not allow the planning board to waive anything, that is a standard. It gives it maybe some flexibility to determine things where it says may do this, or may require that, in which case that is a, that is, um, an elective decision on the board's court, but if they say you will have to have to do this, then there is no whippable. The issue, the, the problem with this is we have non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming use. And, um, this we have not acquired, we've slugged it out where the town has, I wasn't here when it happened, but several members here could tell, can't give a better report on that than I can, but I came here, it was a nest, um, because the, the voice property, all of the activities in there were under one permit, and it was all which was not, not reasonable, cause you have different uses, you should in different sections, and that's when the planning board required Alfred to go out, or required somebody to go out show where these things were in this large plot of, plot of land, the planning board decided that at that time to, to set GPS coordinates, and then they were going to set, um, set those in the ground by putting in those poles, I guess you guys require those poles as a marker that would be difficult to move in the future. And, and that's, that was the standard for determining what the size of, where, where the location of the, of that, um, auto graveyard was, and also where the, where the location of the compost facility was.
And that's something that we haven't required of anybody else to put telephone poles in.
The re, the reason also too, Tom.
That's pretty permanent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But also too, a pole of that size, the pin cannot be moved. How property line pins are moved around, I mean, a pole, that's what I'm saying.
All I'm saying is, is at some point, things should be updated and standardized and.
And the planning board could do that, say that we, you are on.
And I agree, they shouldn't spend ten thousand or forty thousand or whatever it takes.
You can get a classy survey.
But you can get a survey that just shows where their salvage yard is in the bigger picture, and it'd give us a better idea than what we have from Alfred from two thousand and ten.
I, I understand what you're saying, but what would that achieve for us or them?
Well, I was just thinking about this, and this is made a remark. If we did require that, it would probably create more of an incentive to put the land to a higher, more consistent use.
Well, they have value there, because believe it or not, you cannot get auto graveyard permits in the state of Maine, they're extremely limited, they're limited, and we do not allow them, the town.
And so if they sold that property, could somebody be grandfathered in and do it again?
Yes.
Yeah, but we do, but state of Maine is not granting any more of those sort of graveyard permits.
But can you make, can you, can you make the revenue stream?
Well, they don't have Ramblers out there, they, they have this pretty specialized equipment, but they keep the parts out there, and they, I know they use it on their.
Yeah, they do.
They, they sell parts out there, right?
Excuse me?
They sell parts out there, right?
Or they just use the parts they have out there.
Mostly they use for themselves.
I, 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 I would say, I would say, I've never called up and gotten much.
Well, yeah, they, they have different clientele than you, sir.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, usually, they have, except for now, what's going into Old Orchard, there has been a place that you pull and pull, uh, uh, pull your own parts. Every time else, you call up and somebody gets a part for you, and, okay, and then it's, it's that way. I think more times, like for them, and also too, they have a lot of different bigger equipment that can be parked in the graveyard, okay, which is resourcing for themselves.
Right, no, no, I, I walked out there, I saw what they had, he uses it for himself.
Couple of things where, where they took parts out for their own equipment.
Well, let's put it this way, with, with bigger equipment, you have a lot more bigger expenses, instead of maybe crying at two, three-hundred-dollar part, you go buy a turbo or anything else, right? You're talking thousands.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, even a tire, so, on some of those big equipments.
Right.
Two or three hundred, or multi-thousand dollars. So, I mean, uh, it's for the, it's more their own private, I would say.
But I, I think to Susan's point, though, we, I don't think we, I don't think we should have done GPS and just used that little map. We should have required more detail.
Right.
Then.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't justify saying, well, ten years ago, we accepted this GPS, but we're not gonna accept it now, you have to go do the survey. The, to me, the only way to make any kind of a change like that would be to change the ordinance to say every ten or every fifteen years, you have to give us an updated.
That would be.
And that's difficult.
That would be like saying, okay, every, uh, every time you have to, I sell a house, that you have to turn around and have a new survey?
You do.
No, you don't.
There is, it's not a survey, it's a plot.
It's a mortgage.
Yeah, it's a mortgage, it is, it's a new plot map.
A mortgage, a specif class.
Yeah.
You have to do it.
You have to do it, but it's not entirely accurate.
But, you know, there is something to be said for updating and normalizing all the files, it benefits the town of Arundel to have files that are accurate and up to date, it, it benefits purchasers and sellers and our record-keeping, and all I'm saying is, at some point, we need, you, there's probably vellum someplace in one of those file cabinets from, I don't know when, where, with Quill and.
Oh, wait, until they get the new town hall, then they got more new file cabinets to put more junk.
Not a good subject to bring up.
What? I can't hear you.
Not, not a good subject to bring up.
Why is it?
No, you don't even want any file cabinets.
As far as.
I know you need them, but I just.
I just look at it, at, at this point, they're the only, uh, the only applicant that I know of that has to do GPS whenever they come in and they're getting a renewal and, and bringing up your plan.
Yeah, but Gary's, but Gary's.
I was gonna say, Gary's coming next time, guys, on the thirteenth, and he's got a hand-drawn map.
But all these guys that are doing these developments, we're getting real documents with real, and I think.
But that's, that's for, for a, a big change.
No, I understand that, but ten years?
I, but I think, I think it, it gives ga, town government a bad name to just, just tell them, you have to do more for us, you have every ten years, every three years, you gotta, you have to do more, you have to spend more money for us, and, and for what? For not making any changes.
And I'm, I'm not gonna ask, I don't wanna ask them to spend more money and have this whole thing done over again, but I don't want them to tell me you've got it in the files. I'm sorry, you've got it in your files, dig out your files and bring it, don't tell us to go digging this stuff up.
Well, he said you lost them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they say that all the time, it's not true.
Every time, yeah.
So.
Um, you, no, I didn't, well, you're still supposed to give, one thing that they cannot submit, that I don't know, I told them, it was a deed for the land.
Now, here's a question to ask you on that.
That is an easy one, that doesn't cost.
No, the, the thing is.
But we, you know what, I really wonder, um, at this point, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not sure it's appropriate for us to continue discussing an application after the application's hearing has closed here and the applicant is no longer here.
Well, I was talking about files for, I'm talking about in general, I'm not talking about their specific case.
I'm putting brakes on myself to.
So I have a question above the new town hall. How did they get permitted? Cause they didn't come before the planning board.
They said that they were going to and then chose not to.
So how did that happen then?
They don't need a permit, they're a municipal organization.
Municipal facilities are, that's not a municipal facility.
The school is not.
It's a separate district. Municipal facilities are not required to.
Cause we voted and said we didn't have to let, have them do it for signs or for anything else.
Really?
That's, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, it's silly, you guys.
That's a major project.
Yeah, it looks pretty big.
Not nearly large enough.
Well, I'm just being.
If you wanna do it, I'm sure that the public will approve of that completely.
I know the reason why they put it there, but it was, it's too bad it's not on Route One someplace, don't get me going.
I agree.
Well, to answer one question that I've been trying to get at, where you have the salvage yard, okay, unexisting, okay? Fact is, you have to come across different parts of the property to get that, and turn, if we get too technical or anything else, you almost have, have to have a right-of-way.
Well, as, as Ted said, we're not gonna discuss the details of that application again, but.
No, but I'm saying.
Well, in.
And generally speaking, that's what I'm going with.
And, and Phil.
I've been trying to get that before Ted said table it.
In any situation where the applicant owns all of the land, he doesn't need a right-of-way to cross his own land. The right-of-way is from somebody, to cross somebody else's property.
Exactly right.
So in, in this case, they don't need a right-of-way, they own the land all the way around here.
Yes, but we don't know what the will or anything else is said.
It doesn't matter.
It's not relevant right now, because it's, you don't need a will, cause.
It's actually in the trust.
Yeah, actually, so there won't be any probate, so we probably won't know anything.
Okay.
It's probably thinking trust and.
Oh, yeah.
In the state of Maine? Oh, there's not one in California, the, the.
No, there won't necessarily, won't necessarily be unless there's a will to be probated.
Right.
Or, or there's property that isn't, that's held individually and.
That's not in the trust.
Correct.
Right.
Anyway, that's, uh, that's, that's, that's something we don't need to be.
Do we, do we have any updates or anything that we need to?
Or can we go home?
Okay, I've got one for you, here's, here's a little update. I had a meeting, um, a close-out meeting with Benniferd on Thatcher Brook watershed and Richardson watershed, impaired watershed, and he's going to be called an impaired watershed by EPA, by the way. And now they wanna go to the phase two, or phase three, they did phase two, which were a lot of corrective, um, things down in industrial park and did a runoff, and urban runoff, and culverts and so forth, of which I said we were not interested in participating in it, because the town was not gonna spend money replacing private driveway culverts, for, for proprietors, completely a quarter match. But they are interested in, um, doing, um, doing more work on ordinance, um, creation for the Richard, for protections of the Richardson and the Upper Thatcher Brook, um, watershed, coming up with standardized, um, design standards for those districts in terms of pond ponds and, um, buffers, and buffers being actually engineered buffers to process stormwater, so that they can improve the stormwater in that impaired watershed. And, uh, there's a grant that, that you and he is, and, um, the Saco River watershed, um, want to produce, and the question is, do we want as a community to get involved in creating a little bit higher level of standard for those two very impaired watersheds? Part of that watershed, Richardson Brook, in case you didn't know where that goes, I think we all know where Upper Thatcher Brook is, Upper Thatcher Brook basically parallels, at least goes through the Old Alfred Road area.
Right, right at the intersection of, uh, uh, Mountain Road and, and, uh, and Old Alfred, that, that one right there.
That's it, and that's one that floods, by the way, down on the, if you remember, at the pleasure of being there during a major rainstorm, that's one that floods out the intersection of, um, actually, the turnpike intersection.
Yeah.
Coming down to the.
That last rainstorm was bad.
It was real bad, and, um, and they've done mitigation measures, but.
It was bad.
But Richardson Brook is really, our, our, Richardson Brook goes down through Proctor Road area. It comes out of that wetland, uh, that's Benniferd and Kennebunk port, and then parallels Proctor Road and proceeds down, makes the turn just before the railroad overpass, and then goes into, I think behind, it goes into Gondles Wetland there, and then goes behind the Rundle Ford, or Run. it goes into Gondleswetland there, and then goes behind the Rundle Ford, or Rundle Auto, and continues on down, past Sterling and Grove in that area, and joins Thatcher Brook at some point. And that one is our gig, and it's a question of do we want to look at developing specific standards or scientific processes to ensure that any future development in that area does not impair the watershed quality of that brook anymore in the future.
Question.
Yeah.
Okay, along that line, behind Rundle Auto, where wood structures wanted to go years ago and everything else, that's been all flooded, okay? But at one time or another, it wasn't always that wet.
Could be more, because there's been a lot of development in the watershed, which
But would that drain, but would that drain some of that water down? Because there are also
I'm not going to be doing, doing, I don't know if we'll be doing any remedial action.
No, no, but what I'm just trying, what I'm trying to say is, because they want to also expand the industrial park in Benniferd.
Yeah.
Okay, because FM
FMI.
FMI wants to possibly put up multi-new buildings by what is existing already.
We're talking in Moren, Moren Street, Moren Road, or
In the industrial, in the, in the industrial park area down through there.
Well, there's two different
Yeah, there's three different
I don't know where, but I'm just saying.
It's, as you're heading into Benniferd, it's the one on the left that you would turn in if you were going to, what's the opposite likely sits down there?
That's Moren.
That's Moren, yeah.
But the fact is, with larger buildings, more water runoff.
That's why Benniferd's doing this, is they're gonna come up with much more stringent stormwater management processes.
But that should also, because that used to run down underneath the, the, the bridge there, or down near where, on the backside of where the hospital is, where there used to be
Northern Eastern Trailers?
No. Yeah, down through there, yeah. That used to be all one-time clear, but they've had so much pollution everywhere else, it's killed everything down through there.
So the question is, I mean, Benniferd recognizes that the damage they've done to that watershed, and they're in the process of putting in filters, with eighty percent federal money, by the way, putting in filter systems, and actually, they're building one this January, which they're putting in a, basically a soil filter, not just a, a water filter, but a soil filter in the ground alongside one of the, one of the business, trying to remember which one it is. Along one of the, one of the major buildings down there, basically to pick up the water and to inject it into the ground and put it through the filtration processes.
Huh, and this is on the Moren, okay?
I think so. And they want to do this in various places. Now, we don't have a situation that desperate here in Arundel, because we're not that organized. However, we have chances of becoming more organized. And if you've been on Proctor Road, it's, it's a mess down there, and there's, we get more and more pressure, development pressure down in Proctor Road, because, because it's cheap. It's cheap.
It is cheap.
It's, it's starter home stuff. The problem is, it's soaking wet. And Richardson watershed is, I'm amazed it doesn't meander, like that's like the Mississippi through there. But that whole area is just soaking wet. And the question is, do we want to experiment having some engineered solutions developed for those watersheds that we can employ? And then we also might be able to apply in other places in town where we have impaired conditions. We don't have many yet, but we may in the future if we keep pulling in the direction we're going right now.
My question on the whole thing is, first off, what's it gonna cost?
About three grand.
The town of Arundel. Second, three grand's not bad.
No, it's
Secondly, will the selectmen spend the money?
Probably not.
But
You know, I have to make a better pitch to them.
Right, but the, the other, the other thing I'm looking at is that if we want development, we need to do that study so that we can determine how to remediate that impact, because if somebody decides to go in there, we can't very well say to them, oh, no, spend all of this money and have a study done, and let us know what the impact is going to be.
You're correct.
I would call it, but they're not going to come in and get it done.
Or we didn't know, and then they flood out, and then they blame us because we had foreknowledge and didn't explain, or it wasn't written anywhere where they could find out before they built that they were going to get wiped out, so.
And we also, you know, we also have, we have to remember, we have something that Arundel doesn't, excuse me, Benniferd doesn't encounter. We are developing this pattern for so long, for the last ten years, primarily by splits. How many subdivisions have we done, guys?
Not many.
We've done very few, so much so that we almost forgot our processes, because we, the last one we did was, before Oak Hill, Oak Ridge, was Lovejoy, and that was just a little three-lot subdivision. But the simple fact is that splits are exempt from subdivision regulations. But if we were to apply some of these standards as part of the shoreline zone, or part of a watershed overlay district, then, then it would apply to even those, those splits of land, individual splits of land, which really are, are the things that dodge, that really dodge all the regulations that we've got in the town, except for zoning regulations. They're really good. And, you know, that's, that's the right you have.
I think you should develop a better pitch. I mean, not that yours was bad, but if you think you need to be able to sell it to the selectmen, I think, in a way, it'd be short-sighted not to spend the three thousand dollars and, and no, have a roadmap, no, pun intended.
I agree, it would, it would be short-sighted. I, I can think of all kinds of reasons not to do it, but my primary reason for doing it is the quality of the water.
Well, and plus, our costs are mitigated by the fact that Benniferd is doing it at the same time, so we, you know
And we get federal money, eighty percent of it comes from federal money here.
Some of it is shared.
And less repaired for any damage from flooding.
So then you're talking about, this project is going to cost around twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I think it's more than that.
But three grand would be our share.
Yeah, you still have to negotiate with, with Saco watershed, who, by the way, would like to talk to the planning board at some point, or a volunteer organization that come out of U N E, and they, they're some very nice young people.
They're not going to talk to me about fish swimming up river, are they? And, and, and the need to
The dams.
Yeah.
I totally don't write dams on a river.
They did a nice job of putting a dam on the Saco River, on One Eleven, where the bridge crosses.
You know what they say, fish always swims upstream.
One Eleven crosses
Uh, not One Eleven, I'm sorry, Route One.
Route One, by
Yeah, that's, that's very interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of neat.
Route One crossing
Just as you go into Saco, yeah.
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 You go down Allen Street in Benniferd, you cross over past Market, and you head down past Deering Lumber, and you cross into Saco, there's a
Big fish ladder.
Big fish ladder.
Yeah, a huge
Boy, that was like the place, I never
Big old project.
Really interesting. I've never seen a fish ladder look like that.
So you like look, like park it, look.
Yeah, it's unreal.
Yeah, it's interesting, yeah.
It's already starting to catch some big logs, though.
Oh, of course.
It was due, that's why you need a boom, not that that helps all the time, but no, no boom in front of it.
No, no, it'd be a bunch of yahoos with chainsaws.
I was just gonna say, I was, I always do say that.
You know, I was thinking too, back to the DuBois, just for a second, I think they need litters. You know, the way the Egyptians, they carried a ramp around Cleopatra and all the really important people. Oh, my gosh, we need Nubians to carry the four of us on these litters over the slippery ice, so we all remain safe and sound.
All right, on that.
On that.
Motion in the air.
I love your turn.
Yeah, Marty.
Last time, we were talking about a road and property stakes and everything else, whatever has come about that down the street.
Help me out.
Lovejoy.
Oh, yeah, you said something was coming up?
I haven't got, I, I had a meeting with Ms. Hall, who's going to be spearheading this, and I told her that the planning board would consider making a change, but I'm going to need the following. I'm going to need P and Ss on transfer of land.
Yeah.
Survey of those lands that are going to be there, and I also told her and her engineer that I also need a survey showing as about where that road really is in relation to these new lot lines.
And you said survey, right?
I did.
You did.
I think we need to let them know that they have a, a drop dead date. If they don't get it to us by a certain point in time, that they're gonna, their permit's going to be subject to revocation for not having done it according to the permit. I'm tired of people who do stuff and don't want it, follow up, and get us the paperwork that they're supposed to get us.
Well, the problem is that the, the applicant, or in this case, the developer, Mr. Lovejoy, did everything the planning board wanted him to do. It wasn't Mr. Lovejoy that caused this problem.
That's true.
It was the developer of that lot who didn't bother to get a Class D survey, or have the, a surveyor set, setback for that curvature in the lot line, so that they could be in compliance with the town zoning laws. So, it's really the lot owners' issue, not, not this one.
It's the lot owners' issue, then they don't get an occupancy permit.
They don't get an occupancy permit. Without that occupancy permit, right now, they don't need to say
Yeah.
I mean, is a buyer who is sitting in a hotel
At, at some point, but seriously, I, you know, at, at some point, we, we just have to say enough is enough. You, you created the property. We shouldn't, are we adjourned?
I moved earlier.
There was a motion. We haven't done yet, because we're still discussing it before we adjourn.
No, I moved it earlier before we started discussing it to adjourn.
We know what, we know what, what's being done with that road. Right now, that, we're waiting for them to give us the information, correct? There's nothing else to be said about it. What else can you do?
And I also have worked with B D F on their subdivision, which will not be, they will not need to do a road to do their subdivision.
Who?
For real?
For real.
B D F.
Who?
Yes, and I was part of it, so
Pittsburgh, Detroit.
But usually, they don't have to have a road.
A lot has that.
From where?
Route One Eleven. They have legal access, so if they're using a driveway instead.
We need to fix the ordinance, so we can't do that. I'm sorry, that's Mickey Mouse.
Somebody.
All right.
We're gonna have a subdivision, to avoid having to put in a road, we're gonna have to use a driveway instead. That's Mickey Mouse.
Wait, this is
Are we adjourned, Russell?
I am waiting for somebody to second.
I did, I moved it, I moved twice.
I seconded.
Okay. All those in favor? Sorry, that's a lot, thank you. I
Motion to adjourn doesn't require a vote.